So Corey Wolbach, welcome. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks for having me, Bill.
I think the best place to start, given that you're wrapping up your first term on the council, seeking reelection, and it hasn't been the smoothest of four years, I would say. I think you probably agree with that. I wonder if you could just reflect a little bit about what you've learned over these four years and what you've adjusted, shall we say, to the experiences you had during the first couple of years in the way you've approached your service on the council?
Sure. I think one of the biggest lessons I've learned is looking at the two primary roles of the legislative body, being policy direction and oversight. I've learned to focus a little bit more on the oversight part. I'm really proud of the legislative record that we as a council have achieved over the last few years. You know, I found one of my old flyers from four years ago and I was looking over it and all the things I said I was going to work on, and we've actually got a lot of them in place as policies, but some of them have then kind of fallen by the wayside, either because council leadership or staff leadership didn't feel they were priorities enough. And so making sure that we continue to follow up and execute on the policies that we've implemented is one of the big lessons I've learned. And as far as working with colleagues, you know, we have obviously a nine-member body. Everybody has diverse opinions. You never have, you know, a guarantee that everybody's going to be on your side or anybody's going to be on your side. And I think one of the important lessons for me and for anyone who might be joining council, either after this election or in the future, is to make sure you work closely with your colleagues, to make sure you touch base with one or two, you know, compliant with the Brown Act, but touch base with one or two before you suggest even what you might think is an exciting new policy idea, just to make sure that you've bounced the idea off a couple other experienced minds and make sure it's not too crazy. So that's, you know, another important lesson.
And what about the debate and conversation itself at council meetings?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things I think we can do better when it comes to the debates at council meetings. One is, and I'm as guilty of this as anyone, we can be more brief. We can just, you know, get to the point a little bit faster, and that's something I'm always working on. You know, we all want to share all of our background, all of our thinking on an issue, but sometimes it's more important to just get on with business. So that's, I think, an important lesson.
You ran in part on a campaign of civility when you ran four years ago. It's noticeable to me that you didn't mention civility when describing council debates and discussions. Do you, are you happy with the nature of the council's discussions?
It can be tense. I'm being nice and being diplomatic about it, but, you know, certainly we can have some heated policy discussions. We can have some pretty heated debates. And, you know, occasionally we've doubted the sincerity of each other. And I think it's, maybe one of the other lessons is to just always focus on the issues at hand and not worry about why you think somebody might be doing something. You know, I think I've been the recipient and thrown a couple of those myself. I think I've seen it go in multiple directions from multiple angles. But in order to make sure that we focus on the policy debates, I think we should just not worry as much about where we think people are coming from and focus on where we're going.
And what do you think the origin of that change is? Because four years ago, when you came on the council, I'm pretty sure you would agree that the nature of the discussion, the interaction of council members was far more respectful than it is today. So what's changed?
Well, the members of the council's changed, and also I think that we have some pretty tough issues in the community. We have some really heated debates out in the community, and of course, those are reflected in the breadth of opinions on the council.
I'm not talking about opinions, though. I'm talking about the nature of the conversation. There's always been a divide on the council over lots of different issues.
Okay. Well, I also want to emphasize, when I ran four years ago, I was talking primarily about policies, but I also thought it was important to talk about how we have the conversation. And when I talked about civility, it was in a larger context. And the context was, if we're going to have tough policy conversations, you know, let's think about what creates an environment that's healthy for that. And sometimes we've succeeded, sometimes we haven't, but that's kind of the point. You know, along with civility, I think it's also important that we focus on being accurate, that we focus on getting to the truth of matter. And I know when, when anyone thinks that somebody who's in a conversation with them isn't focusing on what's really happening, it can get really frustrating.
So you mentioned sincerity as something that probably shouldn't be questioned. I think one of the council meetings where I was struck by the views that you expressed was last October, when the first colleague memo, which you were not a part of relating to rental housing, came before the council. And one of the authors of that memo was Councilmember Koo. And following her comments in support of that referral, well, the study of rental housing, you very directly challenged the sincerity of the authors of that memo, and you described them as the group that vigorously had campaigned against affordable housing. And you referred back to the Maybell vote. It was a very, it was off-topic in a sense, but if nothing else, you actually used the words "I question your sincerity." So why did you do that? And what is it that needs to take place to stop those kinds of comments?
Well, over the last year, I think there's, we've actually had an opportunity to work together. At the time, you know, I looked at how that conversation was going. I listened to the comments that immediately preceded mine, and they were very clearly, those comments were not in favor of what I see still as important to addressing the overall housing crisis. And I didn't see those comments as reflecting a real effort to solve the big problem in all aspects of it. And, you know, I've, you know, I've worked with the colleagues who brought forward that memo last year, and we actually put our heads together and came up with a different proposal that we brought forward this year. And so I think it's important.
I'm sure we'll get to that, but there's some impulse on the part of some council members, and I think I would include you in that, that the first thing out of the gate is a slam of some sort against the motivations of a colleague, rather than addressing whatever the substantive proposal is. Something is creating that environment.
Right. So, you know, one, I guess another good lesson for anyone who's ever serving on council is, you know, be conscious of the things that really set you off, right? Be conscious of, you know, somebody whether intentionally or unintentionally might be doing something that you feel is baiting you. And don't take the bait, right? And that's kind of what happened there. I took the bait. I don't think it was intentional, but I was offended by what I heard and I responded. And, you know, that's an important lesson to learn. I think we're always working on getting better at our jobs and, you know, being more cordial with our colleagues.
So I did want to address the housing issue. So is the elephant in the room?
Yeah, it's one of the biggest issues in town, for sure. Still is.
So looking at the nexus between commercial development and the demand for housing, looking at some of your votes, you were opposed initially in 2015 to the office cap. And then you were in favor of the rollover provision in 2017 and kind of doing away with the beauty contest aspect. You opposed the increase to affordable housing fees to a high level. It was like proposed up to $70 per square.
Sixty, so, yeah.
Yeah, in a couple of different scenarios. So I want to understand what it is that you think is the right vision for commercial development when we have the housing crisis that is spurred by the jobs, housing imbalance?
Right. So there's a lot of pieces of that. Can I just take them one at a time and I'll try to be quick on each of them? You know, I ran four years ago on slowing down office development and adding housing, adding accessory dwelling units, studios, one-bedrooms, near transit, et cetera. I talked a lot about the need to address the jobs, housing imbalance on both sides because it's severe. And I think, I still am convinced it is the origin of our skyrocketing, is the primary origin of our skyrocketing housing costs and of our traffic and parking problems. And so, you know, if that's the problem that we're trying to solve, you know, you and I have talked about this in the past, my approach to policymaking is to say, okay, let's figure out the vision and what's the policy, what's the goal we're trying to achieve? And then I'm very open-minded about what policies are best to achieve that goal. I'm pragmatic about what vote, what policies we can actually get passed and will be stable and will be effective, or things that we can implement. And so with the office cap, I had argued for a different approach to slowing down office development, which was at that time saying, let's jack up fees crazy high on office development rather than just having a cap. In the end, you know, we decided as a body to go with the cap, and I got behind that. And that, I think, has worked pretty effectively to slow down office development, especially in places like downtown. As far as the rollover, I wanted to make sure that we would still have strong, you know, across-the-board council support for the office cap. And I was willing to make compromises that I didn't think would affect the underlying effectiveness of the cap, but would bring more council members on board, more community members who had never been supportive of the office cap, bring them on board and get behind it. Again, I wasn't initially in favor of it as the best solution to the problem, but I was able to get behind it. I wanted to bring other people with me. And as far as the beauty contest, you know, there are a couple of things that inspired me. I was never really in favor of that, never loved it. Our experience with the bike bridge over 101 helped color my views about those kinds of beauty contests, and I was really worried about the impact on staff time. And we could disagree about the details, but I think as a body, we agree on the goal. And I think that what we have in place now is actually really working. As far as development fees, so initially on the finance committee, I had supported a proposal to raise our affordable housing impact fees very, very high, way higher than they were. And I can't remember all the numbers exactly off the top of my head. I apologize for that. But we then heard from affordable housing providers, the people, the organizations that provide affordable housing, the ones who would be the beneficiaries or the intermediate beneficiaries of this program. And they told us, don't raise the fees that high. That's too high. That won't stop all market rate development. We won't be able to get any affordable housing impact fees. I've always supported both market rate development, especially at the lower end of the market, and affordable housing. And the people who were supposed to benefit and would, you know, would execute with this plan said, you're going to kill the golden goose. And so I listened to them.
Okay. So you opposed the increase up to 35, which is what was eventually adopted.
Sorry?
You opposed the increase just from 20 to 35 as well.
I don't remember that specific vote, but I know I supported increasing the fees quite substantially. There was a whole range of them. We were talking about different ones for on housing, for affordable housing, on offices, on hotels. There might have been one of those that I didn't.
The most contentious one was for offices because the finance committee initially was going to raise it from 20 to 60, and then it was scaled down to 35. I think that was the most.
Right. And did I oppose raising it to 35? I don't think I did.
Well, Janati's looking that up. I wonder if you can, when the housing corporation...
You went with 35. Sorry.
Go ahead.
You went with 35. This is a smaller increase.
So did the housing corporation now called Palo Alto Housing, did they offer any data or studies that supported the point of view that they were advocating that you looked at?
I don't recall off the top of my head. But we had a lot of housing advocates saying, raising it that high would be damaging.
Was there any feeling on your part that the development progress was being hampered too significantly, or was that, did not factor into opposing the development?
Well, because I do support market rate housing at the lower end of the market, and I always have, I wouldn't want to do anything that would stop that kind of development, assuming it's not, you know, causing massive displacement and disruption within reason. But, you know, this is one of those issues where, you know, let's, the question is, how are we going to be pragmatic? How are we going to achieve our goals, right? How are we going to slow down office development and provide enough market rate and affordable housing to try and get a little bit closer to balance? And we could, again, disagree about exactly where the balance point is, but I think we raised our fees at that time to the highest or one of the highest in the county. And even after raising them to the fees, we ended up with, I got, you know, messages from colleagues in other cities saying, wow, you raised them that high? That's insane. And I said, well, you know, it was still a compromise, but I think it was the right one.
So when you say that your priority or one of your two priorities is housing at the lower end of the affordability.
Or the lower end of the market rate and affordable housing.
Right. So the subsidized housing, it's clear how that comes about.
Yeah.
It's not clear to me how you achieve what you, that other piece.
Okay.
How do you, how do you use city zoning to essentially control the type of housing that is being built?
Right.
So that it will appeal to the lower level of client?
Yeah. So it's not just controlling, it's also just incentivizing, right? And so last year, a couple of my colleagues and I worked with, we talked to nonprofit, for-profit developers, talked to staff, talked to housing advocates, and we basically looked at our zoning code and said, you know, what are all the things that Palo Alto does that makes it hard to build housing instead of offices or incentivizes offices before housing? And what are the things that we're doing that would incentivize like a big, like, you know, $15,000 a month or $10,000 a month penthouse as opposed to more reasonably-sized, you know, studios and one bedrooms?
So that's what you're referring to, is that kind of thing?
Yeah. And so we introduced a colleague's memo, basically listing all, a lot of things that we thought were problem points, where our existing policies, our existing zoning code incentivizes the things we don't need and discourages things we do need. And that's now working its way through as the Housing Work Plan.
So can you point to any new housing development in neighboring cities that have actually resulted in housing units available to renters at that lower end of the income spectrum?
Well, the lower end of the market rate is not the lower end of renters. The lower end of renters in our area frankly have to be in subsidized housing. That's why we do that too.
I understand that. I'm not asking about that.
So what I would actually point to is just a couple blocks away here at Page Mill and El Camino. It hasn't been put on the market yet, but we're talking about, you know, studios and one-bedrooms. And I'm really proud of what we did there because that's a development that was originally going to be a bunch of jobs and a little bit of office, a little bit of housing. And I led my colleagues in pushing back against that in a pre-screening and saying, that's not what we're interested in doing. We're interested in seeing, you know, trying smaller units.
My question is, do you know of any development in neighboring cities that have taken, that have intentionally tried to develop projects similar to what you're describing that has actually resulted in rents being low enough so that that low end of the market is served?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Wouldn't that be a good thing to find out before you approve a housing project that's designed for that purpose?
Any studio is going to be cheaper than a penthouse that takes up the entire floor.
Right, but it doesn't mean it's going to, it's going to be affordable.
Right. Well, that's, the lower end of the market in Palo Alto isn't affordable. It's just the lower end of the market. That's why you also need affordable subsidized or BMR housing. But the, part of the reason why we need that lower end of the market, even though it's, you know, by my standards at least, is still not affordable, is that if you have that coming on the market, then people who can afford that will move into there. It won't cause gentrification by moving into the other older units that are more naturally affordable that are on the market.
So if the, in a development like the Page Mill development, what rent would you set as the rent required to reach the market that you have identified as being your highest priority after the subsidized market?
Right. So I'm not...
What are you looking at to achieve by that zoning in the way of a rent that would be affordable?
So the point isn't to set the rent, right?
Well, I don't mean that literally.
Well, the point is to add...
But you have something in mind as to what, what kind of a rent for a studio apartment is actually going to be affordable by the group that you've identified as being our priority in providing housing for?
I think we might be talking past each other. You know, with having market rate housing, the intention isn't to have a specific target, you know, rate. That's not the point of market rate. The point of market rate is that the market will set it.
I understand.
The point of, the point of why I and most people, pretty much every economist who cited this says, you need to add housing units to the market, is that if you do that, then the overall cost for rentals in the market can go down over time, especially if you're also working on the other side of balance, which is slowing job growth.
Quick question. Back to the job growth. You talked a few minutes ago about the need to kind of lower office rate, raise residential, especially downtown. We talked about office cap. But in January 2017, you made the motion to eliminate that downtown cap. How do you reconcile that position with your basic philosophy about containing non-residential development?
Yeah. It was a question of redundancy and a question of if there's going to be office development, where would be the best place to put it, right?
So you think downtown is the best place to put?
I think downtown is probably, or is clearly, one of the better places to put office development. I would rather have office, if there's going to be office development, and we still do allow some, we haven't stopped entirely, if there's going to be some, having it near transit hubs makes more sense than having it further afield. And with the Caltrain station right there and the intermodal transit center where you've got buses coming from all over the place, that's, you know, that's a sensible place to have office development, if you're going to have some, and we still do allow some.
So do you think downtown should have more or less office development as far as pace of growth?
Well, what we've done is slowed down the overall pace in Palo Alto. And if a little goes in Cal Ave and a little goes downtown and a little goes in the research park, I'm okay with that. You know, I'm not trying to escalate office growth. I'm actually trying to, trying to rein it in. That's why I also supported the 50,000 foot, or sorry, the 50,000 square foot per year or 100,000 over two years cap, and also voted to reduce by half our initial decision in the comprehensive plan about how much office development will allow between now and 2030.
So I want to thank you for bringing that up. That was done over the summer. You were the swing vote that caused that citizens initiative to not move forward. And throughout that entire meeting, you didn't say a word on the subject. Can you explain that to folks? That, I think that's the only time I've ever seen you not say anything about why you're voting the way you voted.
There are actually quite a few things where I don't speak to that item.
Not on anything of important.
It doesn't count.
And I don't mean that as criticism. I just, there was something remarkable that evening about your failure to even explain your vote, no less engaged in the debate. And it was a complete surprise vote. So I wonder if you could just explain that?
The vote wasn't a surprise to me.
Obviously not.
I was happy to have, I'm happy to add a little drama and a little spice to Janati's reporting. But, you know, again, I've always said that we should slow down office development. I can say that particular proposal, I was very skeptical of initially, in part because of who was circulating it, a political action committee with whom I have not in the past been aligned. But I looked past my initial concerns about their motivations and I looked at the policy, right? So you're going back to what we talked about earlier. The policy aligned with my general vision. I had wanted a comprehensive plan that had more housing than we ended up with, but I lived with the compromise, but I felt like the balance wasn't quite right. And so while I would have preferred to achieve the balance by adding more housing, you could also achieve greater balance by lowering the job growth. And so their proposal would achieve that. When we first heard it, I was still concerned. I just thought we should do our homework because a lot of people said, well, if you pass this, it's, it's really going to hurt the city budget, or it's really going to hurt the school district budget. And I thought, well, I'm not sure that's true, but let's find out. We've got a couple months. Let's study it. Let's find out if that concern, you know, is real. Let's do our homework. The report came back and it said, the impact on the city and the school district budget will be negligible, if anything. And so the biggest holdup that I had, that people tried to scare us with, didn't really pan out. And so for me, it was easy to vote for in the end, despite where I initially started because I did my homework and I reflected on it.
But why didn't you explain that? Why didn't you?
Because I, well, why didn't I talk about it?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's an important analysis, and it's coming from someone who, because no one would have expected you to take that position, it has all the more import.
I'm not sure, also I'll speak, but again, I don't understand why nobody would expect it when I'd said, when we first heard about it, that I might end up voting for it. I'd said that on the record in a council meeting.
Well, we don't need to speculate about that. But why didn't you explain your thinking and try to sway your colleagues?
I was pretty sure we would have the votes, and frankly, I was a little bit worried about some political gamesmanship. And I wanted to get the policy passed. And, you know, I didn't want to, I didn't think there was anything I could really add that would help the conversation at that point. I was happy to talk about it after the fact. You know, I think I texted Janati back when he asked me about it. But I wanted to make sure it just moved forward and we achieved the policy win.
And you had a second chance to change your vote too, right?
Oh, yeah. And I think the mayor was so shocked by my vote.
She wanted to give you another chance. I think that went through.
Yeah. So, yeah, so clearly some people were surprised, you know, and happy to, happy to surprise you once in a while.
So moving on, one of the sources of housing that people are eyeing, of course, is Stanford.
Yeah.
And there's the initial proposal to different alternatives, but the analysis of the alternatives indicates that there could be increase of traffic, some burdens that would come with housing. I want to see what you think is the best alternative, not alternative, best option for housing at Stanford, and what you would, if you were looking at the higher ones, what you would do about the traffic and how comfortable you feel with those problems?
Yeah. So if Stanford is going to add a lot of new students, faculty and staff, I think they should house those students, faculty and staff onsite or immediately adjacent. But they should help, ideally on campus. So I support the higher, I can't remember what the number is.
5,000, 4,000 and...
Right. So I support the highest one, right? I support the 5,000 housing units onsite. The concern about increasing car trips in the area, I think I've said before that I'm skeptical about that. I think we should, we should keep looking at it. We should do everything we can to mitigate it. But let's be honest, if they're not living there, they're living somewhere else. And then they're going to be commuting in. They're going to create those traffic trips that they're going to take every day to take their kid to school or go shopping or whatever, they're going to do it somewhere, right? They're going to do it wherever they live. Palo Alto and Stanford and the nexus of Palo Alto and Stanford are bikable. A lot more people are switching to electric bikes, electric scooters. Stanford's done a really good job in mitigating car travel by increasing shuttle service through the Mark REIT. We're expanding our TMA, and I'm still looking for more opportunities to have Stanford and their TMA, you know, the Transportation Management Association, SRP GO, work with the Palo Alto TMA PMA to get people around. So given the proximity to where these people would be living, or sorry, would be going to school or teaching or working, I still think that's the best place, looking at the greater ecosystem.
What about the burden to the school district? Do you think that Stanford should step up?
Of course. Yeah, definitely do.
Fund, so you'd have them fund at a greater rate?
Yeah, well, they have to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
If, if Stanford is growing their housing, and look, if they don't grow their jobs and their students and the faculty, then they don't need to grow their housing, and that's okay too. But if they are growing through the number of people who are going to be there during the day, they should grow the number of people there during the night. That might increase the number of students that are associated with those families. And of course, they need to make sure that Palo Alto Unified is kept whole with school sites and facilities and the funding to help support that. That's appropriate. And also operating costs, because you don't, you know, it takes a lot more to educate a kid than just having a room. You need teachers and you need programs, you need supplies.
Traffics aren't the only impact of potential new housing. I mean, I think we saw in the study for housing options that would require some significantly taller buildings, including across the street from town to country. And since building heights is an issue that's kind of split the council in the past, and you supported in last year, not including the 50-foot height limit in the comprehensive plan, I'm just curious if you could explain that position, where you stand on the height limit and in what circumstances do you think it should be breached?
Do you want me to talk about Stanford first or in the city?
I'm kind of more interested in your general view of the 50-foot height limit in the city, the circumstances. But Stanford was just a transition. I can address that too.
Well, and you have no direct control over that anyways.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's true. And, you know, I'd be curious if you'd have a problem with Stanford putting those kinds of 135 or 145-foot buildings in that location.
I'll just say quickly, I think Stanford wants to, Stanford clearly doesn't want to add the housing to keep up with their, you know, their daytime population growth. And I think we need to hold their feet to the fire. And because they don't want to do it, I think they're trying to scare us with the boogeymen of giant buildings near town to country and terrible traffic impacts. And they are jumping all over that to scare us.
It was a county study though, wasn't it?
But they, but Stanford is excited to downplay their capacity for mitigation and downplay their ability to tuck tall buildings back. They have some tall buildings on campus that you don't see from El Camino now. They can do that again. As far as the 50-foot high limit in Palo Alto, like I've said for the last, you know, I said four years ago when I ran, there are a lot of things that I think we can do to add more housing in Palo Alto. And the 50-foot high limit is not the place I would start. And that I had not at that time heard people arguing much in the community to change the 50-foot height limit for any reason, and that I was not going to lean on it, you know, that I'd be open to listening to people like any issue, but that I wasn't going listening to people like any issue, but that I wasn't going to take the lead on that. Interestingly, over the last few years, I've heard a lot of people, including some people who kind of surprised me, saying, we should change the 50-foot height limit in whether it's 60 feet or 75 feet, just to add an additional floor specifically for affordable housing. If you go up higher than that, then you get into steel construction, which is more expensive. But at this point, I'd say I'm open to it, but I'd be very careful about what it would be for, which would be housing, especially affordable housing. And I'd be very careful about where it would go. But that's, you know, that's still the lower on the priority list of things that I think we need to do to address the housing crisis.
So does that mean you would only support going above 50 for affordable housing? Or is that some--
At this point, I'd say I'm open to it, but I'm not really pushing for it. But, you know, if I'm reelected and, you know, there's a discussion about that, I'm not going to promise to vote against, you know, a 60 or a 75-foot building that's especially transit-oriented, affordable housing. But again, I don't think that's where we need to start in the housing crisis.
Why do you think there hasn't been more attention and focus on using city-owned lots for housing development?
Yeah, well, we had a vote on that. We lost the vote. That was going to be part of our housing work plan, to explore using city-owned parking lots for affordable housing. I voted in favor of keeping that, and we lost the vote, just the votes on council. I hope that there, I hope that people will revisit that or the makeup of the council after this election will support that.
What is your understanding, what do you read into that? Your colleagues that opposed that were a little bit all over the map in terms of their reasons. Do you have, what's it going to take to bring over a couple more votes on that?
I don't know.
Five-four vote? I can't remember.
I don't remember what the vote was myself, but if you have any ideas on how to convince my colleagues, please let me know.
Well, it sounded from last night that you haven't given up the fight completely. Talking about the proposed downtown garage, you mentioned you'd like to see that for affordable housing.
Yeah.
And I think that's another issue that's kind of splitting the council now, whether to move ahead with a downtown garage. I feel like proponents would argue that if you don't do it, you've pretty much broken your promise to the voters who supported the TOT in 2014 and who are being asked to do it again this year. And you're on the other side, you're saying we should abandon the plan. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Look, there are a lot of things in our infrastructure plan, and it's important that we passed our transient occupancy tax, our hotel tax increase in 2014 to support that. I support increasing it again this year. I'm strongly in favor of that. There are a lot of really important projects on our infrastructure plan, like our public safety building. For me, the lowest priority is a new parking garage in downtown funded by taxpayers. Look, if a business owner or developer wants to build a garage and they want to pay for it, I might be OK with that. But we're talking about $30 million in our current estimates, and you know that our costs always escalate dramatically. So it might be as much as 40 or 50 or more million dollars for a moderately sized parking garage in downtown in an area that has a lot of parking that we just use very inefficiently right now. There's a lot of private lots that are underutilized, even our public lots are underutilized. And for a fraction of the cost of building that new garage, we could put a lot more money into things like the Palo Alto TMA, which is, even with minimal staff, minimal funding, has already started to make progress in reducing car trips from commuters to downtown. So, yeah, I'm very strongly against moving forward with the downtown parking garage.
Whatever the merits of this particular project, are you concerned that the council will lose some credibility with the voters if they take away from the plan things that they have in the past voted for?
I think that it's more important to vote based on our values than on one very specific policy. Again, I start from the values. You know, what are our values?
What are our values?
Improving quality of life, you know, reducing greenhouse gases, you know, encouraging people and providing opportunities for people to live in town rather than have to commute in their cars alone to town. Look, and if people disagree with my views on that, you know, they don't have to support me and they don't have to support the increase in the hotel tax. I hope they'll do something different.
Do you have any reason to believe that a private developer would propose to build a garage--
I sure hope they don't.
Palo Alto?
I sure--
What makes you think that that's even in the realm of possibility?
The sense I have is that there are probably a couple of business interests in town and maybe one or two members of the city council who really want that parking garage to move forward. And I think most of the rest of the community, whether more resident, you know, the residentialist camp, the environmentalist camp, the smart growth camp, the budget hawk camp, you know, they're all against it. So, you know, I just don't, I don't see the community's support for wasting taxpayer money on it.
No, I get that. I just don't understand who, what developer in their right mind is going to build a parking garage in Palo Alto.
I hope none. But I mean, I guess, you know, so if we were looking at like a coordinated area plan, right, and maybe redeveloping a couple of sites, and people said, you, we want to build a couple of housing projects, maybe a market rate one and an affordable one, or both mixed, with retail on the ground floor, but it's hard to fit the parking onsite. We'd also like to use this third site right nearby for the parking for those adjacent properties.
Wasn't that what Chuck Keenan was proposing in downtown?
In--
On the High Street lot? Anyway, let's not--
Yeah, so that would be conceivable, something like that, but the current proposal, I don't think is sustainable.
So sticking to infrastructure, if you remove the downtown garage from the list of infrastructure projects, are you comfortable that everything else would be funded? Or do you think that we need to find some greater revenue than the two and a half million that would come in from the TOT?
So we were going through the numbers a little bit last night, and it's still going to be a little bit of a stretch. But I think that that's definitely the best place to start. And it's also important that we're, you know, a little bit more careful about how we do our contracts and how we do our procurement and how we oversee our big infrastructure projects, just to make sure that they stay under budget and on time. You know, a famous example, obviously, going back a few years before I was on council, was the Mitchell Park Library, where it ended up actually being OK on the budget, but it took forever. It's a nice library and people love it, but it was, you know, obviously a bit of a headache getting there.
Yeah. Are you comfortable that, with the passage of the TOT, that all the projects would be funded then? Or are you still concerned that we need to fund another revenue source?
I'm sorry, or we need another revenue source. I think that for the things on the infrastructure plan, I think we can get them done by, you know, tightening our belts and passing the TOT. Some of the other things that have come up that weren't part of the infrastructure plan, like making sure that we do Phase Two of the G R Museum and Zoo, parks, animal shelter, and of course, you know, the elephant in the room, grade separation for Caltrain, those are going to take, you know, a lot more, a lot more funding in the future.
What are your thoughts on a business tax, a head tax?
Yeah, so this is something that we, we looked at for, sorry, we looked at two years ago. There was a committee created by the council to look at transportation, excuse me, to look at funding for transportation. The committee focused almost exclusively, it seemed to me, I wasn't on the committee, but they seemed to focus almost exclusively on employee headcount tax, which I was open to, but I didn't think that they had done their due diligence in looking at other options and look at the breadth of funding options. And if, again, if we're going to go and put a tax on the ballot, I think we have to show that we've looked at different options as well. This year, we did look at other options, but we weren't as much focused on transportation. But having now looked and done the polling and looked at various options, I think that a, the argument for a business tax is actually stronger than it was before. I would be very open to it for 2020. And that's actually a good year, just looking at, you know, the kind of turnout that you get in a presidential election year. I think that might be a good year to put something like that on the ballot. One thing I might do, so if we were to do a business license tax and we were to apply it to transportation program funding, one thing I'm thinking about as a model is to use it as a carrot and a stick, or as part of a carrot and stick system, whereby we would say to employers, businesses, developers, look, you're going to have to pay for the transportation impacts that you create and help support our transportation programs. You can do that on your own through a rigorous and forced and, you know, overseen transportation domain management plan, or better yet, by contributing to either Palo Alto TMA or SRPGO, or you pay a headcount tax for the number of employees. And I just, you know, I think we'd want to have it graduated and exempt to small businesses. But the point is, you can take care of yourself, fund the TMAs, or pay the city, and we'll figure out what to do with it. But either way, you need to pay for your impacts instead of externalizing the cost.
You mentioned a minute ago the studies and the various polls that the city, the finance committee did in the last couple of years in looking at what taxes sent to the voters. The business tax was actually specifically excluded from that discussion--
Yeah.
--with the understanding that that could be down the line tied to grade separation, whereas all the other transportation projects that are kind of more immediate infrastructure needs. Do you agree with that approach? Do you think, because it sounds like you'd be OK with having a business tax, not for grade separation, but for other transportation projects from what you're saying now.
Well, I'll say, I was, I was really disappointed, I'm just being nice about it, I was really disappointed that the business license tax wasn't really explored this year. I thought that that should have been on the docket for this year's discussion. It wasn't. I'm one of that vote out of nine, so, but that was disappointing. As far as what a business license tax is used for, you know, some people think it should be used for transportation programs, some people think it should be used for grade separation. I think it depends on how much other sources are going to provide for grade separation, and also depends on, you know, how much money we would be getting from a business license tax. My default has been, as a couple of years ago, to think that it would be for programmatic expenditures, but, you know, I'm open-minded about that.
We're running out of time, and so I want to just try to get a couple of short answers on a few things. Maybe we could just do a quick round robin. Marijuana?
I don't smoke it.
Have you ever smoked it? I'm not going to ask that. I believe, if my memory serves me correct, that you are one of the council members that, at the time, the city chose to do nothing, basically, said, we really should honor the voter outcome of the proposition and come back after we've seen how the state regulations get into place and come back sooner rather than later to address this.
Yeah.
I haven't heard boo on this topic, and I'm wondering if you're going to initiate that, what your position is on that currently.
Yeah, so the state regulations are still in flux, and I'm sure they will continue to be modified over time. Actually, I can't remember if I or somebody else brought this up, but we were talking about this a little bit with our state lobbyists when they came to our study session last Monday. And so, once we get a little bit more clarity with the state regulatory framework, which should be clarified, at least what we heard on Monday, should be more clarified within the next few months, I think we do need to bring that conversation back.
OK. PC zoning, the council just can't seem to kind of, and the staff can't quite make up its mind whether we're abandoning it officially, or we're going to rename it, or what we're doing with it. I wonder, is, in your opinion, should we be having zoning that is created for the specific purpose of entertaining a specific project, which is essentially what a PC project has been?
Yeah. I didn't support PCs four years ago. I still don't support PCs. I think we should get rid of them. I've always said, I think that a coordinated area plan process is a superior process that involves the community from the front end. I'm glad that we're finally moving forward on at least one of those. You know, I kind of almost felt like it was just getting dismissed, and people rolled their eyes when I talked about it four years ago, but we're going to be doing one for North Ventura. I think we need to look at doing one for Stanford Research Park. We know, like, Fries is going away, CPI is going to go away, you know, we should start a conversation about that. And so, yeah, sorry, short answer, no, I don't support PCs.
And campaign spending, Greg Scharf and somebody else set a pretty big new record last campaign.
Four years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I actually spent a summer internship working to lay the groundwork to overturn Citizens United, and I advocate for campaign finance reform. I was actually, after the 2016 election, I had drafted, had co-authors, was working with a city attorney, working with colleagues in other cities to bring forward colleagues' memo for campaign finance reform for Palo Alto. And my co-authors, who will go unnamed, pulled out. And so I wasn't able to move that one forward, but I hope to do that again if I'm reelected.
What would that look like?
Well, there are a couple of options. One is Mountain View Pass something, which is basically like the local version of the Disclose Act, so that if you get a mailer or you see an ad on Facebook that's coming from a third party, you know, independent expenditure, or IE, which thanks to the Citizens United case, people can spend as much money as they want on, is, yeah, I think it's crazy, but at least we could require that those political advertisements say loud and clear who's actually paying for them, the original funders, not Californians for puppies. So that's one option. Another option might be to have a voluntary expenditure limit. So then the question is, what are the carrots and sticks that would get people to participate in that? Mountain View, again, looking into our neighbor, they have a voluntary expenditure cap that people actually follow. It's just part of the political culture there. And so there are a couple of things we could do. We could maybe just advertise and get your help advertising, here's who's following that voluntary expenditure cap, here's who's not. And then we might even explore publicly financed, or, you know, like a public financing system, where if you abide by an expenditure cap and a donation cap, for every dollar you raise yourself, the city would, you know, through some, we'd have to figure out the funding mechanism, the city would--
Business tax.
Right? The city would provide, you know, some matching funds. So there are a couple of ways we could look at it.
Are you in favor of a tax on sugary beverages?
I am. I was very, I was leading the charge on that one, drafting it, colleagues were working on that one, too. And then the state said, we can't do that. That was actually, I think, a horrifying example of corporate greed, you know, basically threatening local government throughout the state, saying, we're going to pass a ballot measure, we're going to force a ballot measure that will probably pass, that would make it difficult for any local government to raise revenue in the future. But we'll hold off on that if you, the state legislature, pass a bill prohibiting sugary beverage taxes for the next 12 years or something. I thought it was just, just about the worst precedent I've seen.
And then do you have any vision yourself for Coverley Community Center, ideas for how you think that should be used?
Yeah, so I do think that having the opportunity for a future high school is probably not a bad idea. I do think that having community center space there is really important, and I like the nonprofit space. So really having a mix of uses is, I think, where we want to end up. And having thought, going to how those uses work with each other, for instance, Avenidas was down there, or has been down there. I would love for Avenidas to stay with a foothold there when they return to downtown, so that there would be Avenidas in both North and South Palo Alto. And then if there's a school there, or there's daycare there, or there's artists there, you know, how do we create a really vibrant community there where kids can hang out with, you know, seniors, and seniors can be mentors to kids and they can do art together? You know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of opportunities, and I don't want to, I don't want to dictate the specifics, you know, of that, but I want to make sure we're really thoughtful about how things work together.
Is it time for the city to stop talking about fiber to the premises?